All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the afternoon session of the March 1st Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll start off with item 13. We do have some items in the morning that we rolled over, but we'll take them after our Public Works items. So the first one is item 13A, Order 13 dash, actually, 16 dash 3 dash 1 dash 06, in the matter of electing whether or not to hear an appeal of a hearing's officials reconsiderate, reconsidered decision regarding a land use compatibility statement, LUX. Determination that an accessory structure in the impacted forest land zone F2 complies with lane code 16 dash 2112 subsection 2 and the citing standards of lane code 16 point 211 subsection 8, map 18 dash 04 dash 27, tax lot 402. I'd like to welcome Raphael Seba, our associate planner. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before you is an appeal of a determination by the hearings official that an accessory structure meets the citing standards of the impacted forest land F2 zone. The planning director approved the application in May of 2015. A neighboring property owner appealed that decision, and the matter went to the hearings official. On August 17th, the hearings official denied the application based on a road-related issue. Both the applicant and the neighboring property owner appealed the hearings official's denial. On reconsideration, the applicant submitted evidence demonstrating compliance with the road standard in question, and the hearings official issued a reconsidered decision approving the application. The neighbor appealed the reconsidered decision, and the matter is now before the board. The board's decision, whether to hear or not to hear the appeal, is guided by the criteria of lane code 14-600. The director does not believe the appeal meets the applicable approval criteria for the reasons set forth in the agenda cover memo, and does not recommend hearing the appeal. Additionally, the appellant has specifically requested that the board not hear the appeal so that they may appeal directly to Luba. Yesterday, I forwarded you the appellant's response to the applicant's motion to dismiss the appeal. In short, the planning director accepted the appeal and did not reject it in the manner required by 14-520 in order to reject an appeal. In summary, the director recommends the board adopt the hearings official's approval of the application as outlined in option 1 of the board packet. I'm having to answer any questions that the board has at this time.
Questions from colleagues? So I guess I have a question, and bear with me. I got a cold this morning, and so I got some drowsy medication on. So when I read through this, it sounded like this was a LUX lane use compatibility statement.
Correct.
Request, and so I'm trying to draw the connection into an application.
So you recall in, I believe, January of 2015, there were some code amendments, one specifically to the impacted forest land zone that allowed accessory structures?
Right.
And as a part of that code amendment, the director adopted a procedure to process applications in which a property owner was trying to confirm that an accessory structure met the citing standards in the F2 zone. At that time, the director determined that a land use compatibility statement for which we sent notice would be the procedure to do that. We've since changed our practice, but at that time, it was this idea of doing a land use compatibility statement and then sending notice and providing an opportunity to appeal on that.
Okay. All right. That helps me understand, because my knowledge of land use compatibility, how do we get to an application? Okay, so I appreciate that. Other questions? No questions? Do we have a recommendation by staff? Do we have a motion, then?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark.
To approve Order 16030106 in the matter of electing whether or not to hear an appeal of hearings, et cetera.
Yep.
And is this option 1? That's the way the orders are.
I believe the order is for option 1, which is.
Option 1, yeah.
Affirm the decision.
Yeah, affirm the decision. Okay. Thank you.
Just a second. Mr. Clark, do you have something to add?
No, just coming up here in case you have questions. I think that's correct. I believe what's recommended is to affirm the hearings official, well, actually, remind me, Raphael, that to adopt the.
To adopt the attached order.
Motion 1 in the agenda cover memo is to adopt the attached order, elect not to conduct an on-the-record hearing, affirm and adopt the Lane County hearings official decision as the county's final decision, and expressly agree with and adopt the interpretations of lane code 16 made by the hearings official.
Okay.
Second.
Further discussion? I know we don't, the hands out there, but this really isn't a process where we have a lot of public input, so. No further discussion?
I'll just note, for the record, I agree with the staff memo that this does not seem to be of countywide significance, something that's going to come up over and over again or be dealing with a specific resource. Yeah, so the criteria for us to hear the appeal versus letting it go to Luba just doesn't seem to be there. And I agree with adopting the decision as our final decision and having it move on. I think that's the best place for this to be heard.
Agreed. I'll also note that the board's aware, and the material's in the pack, and I think Mr. Seba sent an email regarding this as well, that there's been a motion to dismiss the appeal that's been filed here locally, claiming that the appeal should have not been accepted or rejected. It's been staff's opinion that that motion to dismiss should not be granted by the board, and there's also an email Attorney Mike Reader sent over essentially making the same argument that staff has sort of recited in its approach to how to deal with that motion to dismiss the appeal. And so, and it's our recommendation collectively that that's correct and shouldn't prevent the board's action today.
Okay. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass if you have a vote. Next item is B. It's the first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing for ordinance number PA 1320 in the matter of amending the rural comprehensive plan to redesignate land from forest to marginal land and rezone land from impacted forest land F2 to marginal land ML slash SR with site review and adopting savings and severability clauses, file number Applicant is Kirby, and we have with us Lindsey Eichner. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I request that we move to approve the first reading and set the second reading in public hearing for Tuesday, March 15th at 1:30 PM time certain, please.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark.
I move to accept the first reading and set the second reading for Tuesday, March 15th at 1:30.
Second. This is for ordinance BA 1320.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to go back and go through the items that we skipped before lunch. We'll start off with item 6A, which is the county administration announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few items here for you. First, our staff, a couple weeks ago, we had a number of folks from our staff that toured Western Shelter. This is a local company that makes wildland firefighting equipment, flame retardant equipment, as well as refurbishes shipping containers for use in various capacities. They have contracts with the Department of Defense, with FEMA. They do a lot of work. When we were there, we toured their operation and had an opportunity to see shipping containers that they've refurbished that are going to be part of a mobile hospital that's being shipped overseas. So they shipped all corners of the world, and I just wanted to mention that it was a great opportunity for us to, one, get a better handle on an outstanding company that we have locally here. Mike Scella, their new CEO, toured the facility with our staff, and we had the opportunity then to gain a better understanding of a local company's product that potentially could be used in some creative and innovative ways to solve local challenges. We talked about certainly the need for housing for the 2021 World Games, the need for housing for individuals who are facing poverty and homelessness in our community, and shipping containers refurbished, remodeled. Shipping containers have been used in other places, both in Europe and in the United States, for multifamily structures. And so, I just wanted to make that note and, again, recognize an outstanding company locally here that I don't think gets a lot of recognition because most of their products get shipped around the world, but good highlight company that's doing great work here locally. I also want to share with you, we've had conversations, I updated you a few months ago about conversations that we've been having with our behavioral health and health and human services team, as well as our public safety partners in Lane County, the sheriff's office, district attorney, law enforcement agencies, both in Eugene and Springfield and throughout Lane County, and discussions that we've had as the board has identified in your strategic plan. One of your goals is to expand the availability of targeted evidence-based behavioral health services for people who are homeless or who are involved in the correction system. And so, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago to talk about the 370 aid and assist individuals who are deemed to be not fit to face trial, and many of these individuals have been sent to the state hospital. The state, OHA, has now told us, Lane County is sending too many individuals to our state hospital. You need to come up with an alternative solution in the local community. So we brought together our partners in the public safety and mental health communities to talk about what can we do. There doesn't appear to be any more state funding, but what can we do to coordinate our resources? What can the judiciary do in terms of the referrals that happen? We're looking at different creative models. We had conversations about, you know, the Sherman Center and the prior, it's been closed now for several years, the prior psych hospital that Lane County used to operate adjacent to the adult corrections facility. So I just wanted to share that with you, and we're having a number of conversations about how we could potentially pull together some options that the board and the budget committee could consider on that front. And so, I know that the board is aware of these discussions that we're having to coordinate mental health and public safety correction services together, and I just sort of want to keep you updated on those discussions and the fact that we're working collaboratively towards a series of options, again, that the Board of Commissioners, and we think there's value in having the budget committee weigh in on the resources that potentially could be leveraged within our budget and outside of our budget to provide outstanding services and meet the needs that we have here locally. Happy to answer any questions on that. I will also say that we recently did a video, we're doing videos highlighting different county services. We've done several of these over the past several months. We did one on parks, one on roads, one on youth services, and we just completed a video highlighting the outstanding, some of the outstanding work that's happening in our behavioral health division. And so, that's going to be communicated to all of our employees and posted online, I believe, today. So look out for that. Commissioner Stewart and I last week had the opportunity to have lunch, as we do every month, with our, in different departments. We had lunch with the county administrator, with our information services staff on Friday, and had an opportunity to share what we're working on in the board's strategic plan, what we're working on related to our budget, and answer a number of questions from the staff. So we continue that effort to outreach on all of our departments and meet regularly with our staff. The legislature is wrapping up. We anticipate the legislature will wrap up this week, and you saw Mr. Kyler was here. We sort of did a double take, and we saw him in the public services building, because he's been spending most of his time, obviously, up in Salem over the past month. We're tracking, obviously, the courthouse funding initiative, mental health funding proposals, the tobacco bill that we talked about, this, and other items. And we'll have an update for the board on March 15th on the short legislative session and the actions that happen there. So I think, given that you have a number of other items here, I'll leave the rest till next week unless you have any other questions for me, Mr. Chair.
Questions?
Okay, thank you. Next is item 7. Any county council announcements?
Will we brief? Nope.
No?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I do have a question on the announcements. Earlier today, the HACSA board met, and the issue of whether, who's the legal counsel for HACSA was brought up by me. Could you confirm who is the legal counsel for HACSA?
Not very well. I mean, I heard some of that discussion, and my thought was regarding the issue of legal question of who should make appointments to the board of directors. I think it makes sense to refer that to, or have HACSA, essentially, the HACSA board refer that to the attorney that assisted with the organization of the nonprofit. It's been, to me, sort of a conundrum as to who provides legal advice to HACSA because of that sort of dual, public-private entity issue. We have looked over their agenda packets in the past and sort of spotted legal issues when they arise, but as to that particular issue, I think it makes sense to talk with the attorney who put together the nonprofit.
My question is, who is that?
I don't know, actually. I don't know.
All right.
I can take a look through our system and see if there is a contract in our system that where HACSA did that work.
Okay.
I can do that.
Yeah, but in the past, Lane County legal counsel provided legal counsel to HACSA, but that isn't occurring now, and my question is, well, are you guys working with someone when we have issues that are connected?
Yeah.
Who do you work with?
Right, well, and we, in terms of, as far as I know, there isn't an attorney that we have working with on HACSA stuff. We've had, as I say, field of questions from HACSA before, but I think they've got private counsel that does most of the stuff now. But I'll find out who that is and ship an email out.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, the council? Mr. Clark?
Just to comment on that, it was about the time that I came to the board that that discussion was being held by the board of county commissioners, or after I was elected before I came, and I believe it was that point in time that the, any relationship between our council and HACSA was severed. I don't know the exact timing of it, but I do remember the meeting happening, and in conversations, HACSA is acting pretty much independently of Lane County's legal counsel. I don't know that that's the best state of affairs, and the reason I say I don't know it is because I simply don't know. I think that it could be something that we could have a discussion regarding in the future, and I don't know that it is appropriate for county council to actually be involved with HACSA. It's something to certainly explore, but it benefits us and it benefits everybody that HACSA receives first-rate counsel.
Sure. And they did, I know that, I'm losing the name now, they had separate council when we were dealing with a deal with Brian Obi and HACSA for the housing and the parking area. I can't remember exactly what that is, but it was around that time where the issue got a little bit separated. As I say, we do tend to look over the agenda packets that come through just to spot issues, but mostly that's on behalf of the county rather than for HACSA.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. So item 9 is Commissioner's Business. We'll start off, number 1, with announcements. Mr. Mosovitch?
So I just want to make sure that the folks down in the Mapleton area of my district are aware that there's a public meeting on March 10th at the high school about the Indian Creek Landscape Management Plan that the Sayuslaw National Forest has proposed. They tried to hold a little bit of a public input session at the Grange Hall, and they couldn't get everybody into the room. So this is kind of a rescheduled second attempt at getting public input on that plan. It's somewhat controversial, I think, in that it's calling for some road closures in public lands, and I think the community there is not very happy about the additional road closures. But it's the community's opportunity to, they'll do a short presentation on the plan and then provide your input to the Forest Service as a, right now, it's a draft management plan, so it's your opportunity to have input and maybe alter what the management plan will be. So that's March 10th at the Mapleton High School, and it's from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM in the evening.
Okay. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I have two short items that I deferred from remonstrances this morning, then one announcement. The first one was regarding the Mental Health Advisory Local Alcohol Drug Policy Committee. We passed a couple of items on our consent calendar this morning that were fairly important, but I didn't, it didn't rise to the occasion me pulling them from the consent calendar. Just very briefly, regarding the Mental Health Advisory Committee, it is a 13-member commission. It broadly represents the community with a balance of age, sex, ethnic, socioeconomic, geographic, professional, and consumer interests. It includes advocates for persons with mental or emotional disturbances, drug abuse problems, mental retardation, or other development disabilities, and alcoholism and alcohol abuse problems. Kind of a long mouthful there, but it's, what it is basically is a board of professionals. I sit as a non-voting member on that board, and one of the orders that we passed this morning is to actually assign me the commissioner liaison to that position. We had more or less unofficially done it, but the board order this morning assigned me that position. And we received a testimony from the MHAC LADP committee regarding, Ms. Brown is the liaison. She'll be providing regular testimony to this committee, to the board, excuse me. And the other thing is that the, a few bylaws changes were accepted this morning. Nothing major, but it came as a pretty, after a pretty exhaustive retreat that the MHAC LAPD, LADP, excuse me, conducted last fall. So a very deliberative committee. It's a group of professionals who really, really take their work seriously, and the recommendations that come out of that committee are very high quality and very well thought through. The second thing I wanted to talk about was regarding primary care. Just, we've talked about primary care and the dearth of primary care in Lane County, and we do have our federally qualified health centers that provide a great deal of assistance to people who otherwise would not have a primary care physician or nurse practitioner. We also have a couple of other agencies in town that provide free medical care. Volunteers in medicine we all know about quite well. The other one I wanted to talk about for just one moment is, you see it every Sunday outside on the park blocks. It's called Occupy Medical. It's a remarkable, remarkable group of people who are volunteers. They pull a bus up every Sunday. They take one or two or sometimes three hours to set up their tents, and they perform services that, medical services that otherwise would not be performed for the men and women who they perform services for. Basic things like light dental care, like foot care, other primary care-type items that otherwise, once again, the men and women who typically do not have addresses are able to access the services there. And the folks at Occupy Medical do yeoman's work. You know, they have a number of teams, and their teams are, they have an intake team, a triage team, prescribers, treatment, wound care, support services, the Gorilla Hair Salon, hospitality, peacekeeping, and then actual web, what they call web wizards. Each one is led by a volunteer, and Sue Sierra-Lupé is more or less the coordinator of the entire effort. And I just, I mentioned in passing the administrator that they would love to find a place that they don't have to set up their tents every Sunday. They set up the tents for, takes a couple of hours to set up the tents for about three hours of operation, and then a couple of hours to take them down and dry them. And so, at some point, I would love to see if there is possibility, if there's a possibility of finding a place where they could operate undercover on the rainy days and still be able to provide the services that they do for free, that nobody receives any compensation for them. They do it all through volunteer activity. And the last is an actual announcement, those two were not announcements, but the last is an actual announcement. On Friday, March 11th, Serenity Lane is opening its new campus. They have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on the new campus out, the Coburg Interchange on I-5. It's a remarkable campus that is providing, once again, tremendous services to the men and women who access the service there. It's March 11th at 10:30, and we are all invited to attend. Thank you.
Mr. Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quickly, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Oregon Logging Conference here in Eugene, and one of the hot topics that was talked about, in fact, they had a renowned architect who has done projects all over the world, get into a significant discussion about this, was the use of cross-laminated timber, so CLT. And as you know, as we all know, Valerie Johnson and her operation became the first certified CLT manufacturer in the United States, and this is something that I believe is a real potential. And in fact, what I found interesting was meeting and talking to many of the folks actually in the industry who were very, very interested, very engaged with it, and kept talking about, can you imagine building high-rises out of wood? And so, there's real potential there. One of the things that was mentioned, and I thought was really interesting by the architect, was the fact that Springfield, Oregon, was very interested in moving forward on a parking garage. So that is out there, that's been discussed. I thought that was pretty neat to hear that. We know that Mayor Lombard and the city has really been pushing that significantly, and but it looks like it's something that's gaining traction. And I think the big issue is not only having the manufacturing operations in place, but I think also having a distribution network in place, and so that's not there yet. But I think this is a real coming opportunity for counties such as Lane and, but also the state of Oregon, where you can have a win-win. So you're harvesting, having a comprehensive harvesting program in our forests, but also dealing with the carbon footprint as well. As we know, buildings emit, concrete and steel buildings actually emit a lot of carbon, and wood actually takes it in. And so, this is, to me, it's a potential to be a win-win all the way around, but I thought it was very interesting, but the most interesting part was those in the industry were very, very engaged and were wanting to actually have a path to move forward. Thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Mosovitch?
Just to add to that, there's been significant studies, in fact, I'm looking at an article from Treehugger, that says, "New study confirms that switching to wood construction from concrete or steel reduces CO2 emissions." So it's a significant difference in the carbon footprint.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any announcements onto agenda team requests or work session requests. And I do have one item there. Each of you, I hope, I was able to give a email from Don Beck, a question about the difference between a dog license application for a sterile dog of $18 and a fertile dog of $42. I'd like to see if there's head nods to give this email to Mr. Russell and ask him to have the Lane County Animal Services Committee review the request and report back. And the reason I do is, I did personally have an experience where I had a bulldog that I purchased, a rather expensive amount, and in trying to, I was not interested in having puppies with the bulldog, so I had to comply with the licensing's requirement. I went and had the dog spayed. I probably did it a little bit, maybe a little bit too soon, but followed the guidelines and had some complications with it. The dog ended up not being able to, it was incontinent and wasn't able to handle itself, and there was some issues. So, I mean, if there's a couple other commissioners or that that would recommend this being given to the committee, just to see if they're, review it, and see if there's any merit and potentially tweak in our policy a little bit to be a little bit more, if there's even an issue. So I guess that's my request. I got one from, so there's three head nods to go ahead and see if, what the Animal Services Committee would recommend, if anything. Is there any other agenda team requests, work sessions? Okay, so we do have an executive session. So at this time, I'll read in the script, and then we'll move up to the
So at this time, I'll read in the script, and then we'll move up to the conference room. So the Board of Commissioners will meet in an executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660 subsection 2, subsection A, and subsection H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in the executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session, and we do reserve the right to come back out into public session. If there's no reason to come back out into public session, the board will adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session. So with that, we will move up to the conference room.